Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting Peter's Township Council order for Monday, October 24th, 2022. Mr. Lauer, please call the roll.
Ms. Shanfield?
I'm here.
My understanding is Dr. Boroskis is going to be late. Mr. Harkurid?
I'm here.
Mr. Steigel?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
I am here.
Mr. Rahn?
Here.
All right, so we'll pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes from the last council meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any additions or comments, corrections? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carry six, nothing. Next item will be a special report. I'd like to call Mr. Brian Schill up.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Brian Schill, Peter's Township Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to introduce someone very special who will be doing something very extraordinary. Rotary International recently announced that Ms. Stephanie Urchik will become the president of the international Rotary for the 24-25 year. Why is this special? Because Ms. Urchik is a member of the McMurray Rotary Club. So she'll be representing 1.4 million Rotarians and 34,000 clubs around the world. So at this time, I'd just like to ask Stephanie to come forward for a moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I really came to introduce myself tonight, but he just did that. So I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you. As Brian said, I am a member of the McMurray Rotary Club. And there are 1.4 million Rotarians around the world, and 55 of them are right here in McMurray, PA. And as you know, that club has been active for 57 years in this community. And like every other Rotary club around the world, Rotarians in McMurray look at the community and look for things to be made better. There's evidence, when you drive around this community, of what McMurray did. Your municipal clock, the park, that they renovated the old lot for their 50th anniversary, the things you can see, but there's also things you can't see. This club is very active with charities throughout the county, as well as supporting students in our school, sending them to special Rotary youth leadership camps, the World Affairs Council, sponsoring scholarships. So it's a very active club, and I'm very honored to be a member of that club. So I thank you for allowing me to come and introduce myself to you. It's a pleasure to be in front of you, and I hope that you will continue to recognize McMurray Rotary as one of the organizations helping to build Peter's Township. Thanks so much.
And thank you very much, and congratulations.
And to think that I would point out to you that it's very appropriate that Stephanie should be here today. Today is World Polio Day.
It is.
And if you know anything about the fight against polio, you know that the Rotary's been in the forefront of that with the World Health Organization. And with the exception of the fact that there have been a couple outbreaks in New York, polio has left the United States largely as a result of their efforts. And the reason why October 24th is it was chosen as World Polio Day to celebrate the birthdate of Jonas Salk, the doctor from the University of Pittsburgh who came up with the first vaccine. So thank you for being here on this day.
My pleasure. Okay. All right, next item on the agenda will be audience comments. This is an opportunity for a member of the audience to address council for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to unfinished business. It's not showing any here. So moving to new business, the first is our request to discuss pickleball programming at the Community Recreation Center.
So we've received a request from a resident to be able to discuss pickleball programming at the Rec Center. Who's the spokesman for the group? There you go.
Patient cards. I'm supporting my support for the players here. My name is Sue Green, and I'm 24th resident of Peter's Township. And we're coming before council today as taxpayers and residents because we would like to reinstate the two-state Thursday pickleball hours at our recreation center. Last winter, many of us took classes through the Rec Center and then continued to play there until the end of April. At that point, we had moved to the Tennis Center, and that's where we're still currently playing. Temperatures are dropping and winds are increasing, as we figured out last Tuesday when we froze to death there. It's not conducive to playing outside anymore. So we need a place to go back indoors. It's not just my group, or not my group, but it's not these people here. It's the whole pickleball community is struggling with playing indoors. Those Tuesday-Thursday timeframes were 11:30 to 1:30, and we're not displacing another activity, we're not displacing another sport. The Recreation Center is open. There's nothing scheduled, not for the September-October timeframe, nor the upcoming November-December. So we're asking for your help in getting those times back. It doesn't really even create extra work for the rec center. We put up and take down the nets ourselves, so it's not like we're tying up their time. This pretty much seems like an easy business decision, right? Empty gym space, zero dollars. Pickleball players, say there's 10, that's $450. We'd like to keep as taxpayers that money in our community and in our rec center. You know, there have been discussions that there doesn't seem to be a need for more pickleball time, and I would strongly disagree with that. And I'll tell you why. Just one instructor in Peter's Township has instructed 335 people in our township in just 10 months. So where are those people going to play? Where are the resident people going to play? So there is a need. It's a shame that more and more people are learning and playing and enjoying it, but now we have nowhere to go. I'll give you some examples. I checked with some of our neighboring communities' recreation centers. In Peter's Township, we have eight hours of pickleball a week, two courts, two hours, two days. If we go to neighboring Buckle Park, their recreation center has 19.35 hours a week. If we go to Upper St. Clair's Recreation Center, they have 22.5 hours a week. So they're expanding their program where ours is contracting, and it just doesn't seem to make good business sense. Okay, I'm going to go over probably all seeming on the news. You've all heard about pickleball mania. It's true, it exists. But there are health benefits. It helps with your balance, your reflexes, your hand-eye coordination, plus it's a strategic game. So you're having to use your noggin on where to place the ball. And by the way, Tim back there, he gets me every time on the cross thing, so I haven't quite learned that yet. Another statistic, as per ESPN, 4.8 million people are playing in the USA currently, but the fastest-growing segment is the 24-year-old and underage. So this is a multi-generational game. We play with all ages. You know, I've played with people half my age, and those 12-year-olds really can pick them all pretty well. Just kidding, of course, as my group actors laughing at me. Two hours of pickleball playtime equals about four miles of walking. As per Forbes Magazine, it is the fastest-growing sport in the United States. It's grown 40% over the last two years. So, you know, all of us came to play for a variety of reasons. Some for the health benefits, some for the social aspects, some of us just wanted to learn something new. We each achieved our individual goals, but something I don't think we expected, we got a sense of fellowship and community. And we've come together in this world where everybody's divided over everything to get healthier and to become connected. So we're asking you to help us play in our community as taxpayers, give us a place to play. And that's all I really have to say, except thank you for letting us present. I mean, I could go on and on about the statistics and everything, but you've all seen it, you've all heard it.
Can I ask what has prompted you to come to council with this discussion? As this is a situation that we typically hear would portray as being within the realm of the park and rec group.
We went that route. Another group of pickleball players went to the Recreation Board in, I think, June 16th of this year, and did not get anywhere. I have sent, and I think Nora sent them to Mr. Lauer, the texts, I mean, the email messages that went back and forth requesting the time. We even had an impromptu meeting, but after that meeting, when the new November-December booklet came out, they didn't include the two-state Thursday time. So they seemed pretty set that two days a week, Monday, Wednesday, is enough. But as I stated, that's eight hours a week when repeating recreation neighbors are double and sometimes triple that amount.
And Sue, can we add that there is a waitlist? For there is a Monday.
If you're going to speak, we need you to come up to the podium.
Yeah, and if you could leave your name and address on the paper, that helps the person doing the minutes.
I can. What was your point, Lou?
Waitlist.
Oh, there is a waitlist. So for example, on Monday, the open enrollment started for Monday, Wednesday pickleball. I didn't get to it till Tuesday, it was already full. So I'm on a waitlist, as are probably about 10 other people here. So I don't understand why they can claim there is no need when clearly there's a need, and there's the space and time available.
Oh, I was the Monday, or the Tuesday, Thursday. Take again.
I understand what's being said here, but I had a chance to speak to Ms. Harmel about this, to find out the answer to that question. And where what they're portraying is maybe a need that exists now, but that is not what the history has been. And the courts have been unused when they've been available for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And so what Ryan, the Assistant Parks and Rec Director, was charged with was coming up with an activity so that, in fact, the space is actually in use. I don't know that that activity has been scheduled, and I would like to be able to go back and have a discussion with Michelle and Ryan to make sure that, in fact, there's something in that space. Because it's like every facility the township owns and the school district owns, their value is only when they're in use. So unless something has been scheduled in there, I'm not quite sure why we wouldn't allow some activity in there, so.
And we're not even asking for just the 11:30 to 1:30, whatever hours they have open those days.
Well, the problem with the Rec Center is that it is programmed for lots of things, and one of the, and council can change your minds on this if you choose, but one of the things that council directed to the Parks and Rec Department when the Rec Center opened was time needed to be saved for open gyms, so that people could just stop in and use it. So sometimes people go over to the Rec Center, and they'll see a handful of people on a court, well, that's open gym. And sometimes open gyms, a lot of people on the court. So, but if council wants, I'll go back and have this discussion with Michelle to make sure that, in fact, something is programmed in there, and if there isn't, that these people be allowed to use that time. And you know, the thing I think Michelle has told everyone is demonstrate that, in fact, there's a need, you know, by programming the time, and then we would look at expanding the hours again, so.
And you know, we had those hours as late as April this year. And when we had our impromptu meeting with Ryan, he said that he went and looked at the numbers, and the numbers didn't support it. But I said, the numbers are skewed, because if we took the class in March, that didn't count as playtime for them. So in April, we were just considered drop-ins. We couldn't schedule for March and April because we would be on that point because we took class there. And then the other thing, and I wasn't thinking on my feet that day, when Ryan said he went back, the Rec Center was closed for COVID. People didn't get vaccinated till, what, March, starting in March 2021? So the numbers aren't going to look great back then, but just enough people, like in our group, there's 16 of us, and there are other groups that would come and play as well. So I don't know what else we could do, and that's why we wound up here. Because we've tried those routes, we've tried banking, we've invited them to come play, as we will with any of you, if you want to come play, and we just didn't get anywhere. And again, it seems so silly that it's making zero dollars when it could be getting some revenue. And we've been playing with the Tennis Center every Tuesday and Thursday for May, and we'll be playing this week because it's nice. And I'm wondering, did somebody from the Rec Center reach out to the Tennis Center and say, hey, how to go there with reports this year, this summer?
I don't think, this council is not intimately involved in the scheduling of these facilities. And I think if I spoke for myself, we've listened to what you've had to say, we set up these various departments to take care of managing these facilities. Before we had them, this council had to schedule the ball fields and the soccer fields and the basketball courts, and I'll have to tell you that I can even remember back those days. And we're, do I want to say sympathetic? No, I think we're very much in support of getting the use and the facility going, but I don't know that we're the forum that is going to affect that, other than directing this man to get back into what's happening.
I have a question, if you don't mind. For, so whenever you're playing, so if the Rec Center is cut into two parts, do you utilize for, how many, how many games can go on half of a court?
On two.
Two.
Yeah.
So it's one on each side. So you would need like all four courts, or?
Well, no, you have to. So when the net divides it, we just have two nets on one side. So eight people can play at one time.
So then the other side could be used for open gym or whatever?
Yeah. And that's what it was earlier this winter. While we were out there playing, there may have been some people come in, dribble some basketballs.
Right.
Whatever.
And then another question is, whenever the tennis bubble goes up, and I'm sorry, I don't even know if it's up, I haven't seen it, it is, are you not allowed in the bubble?
Those are play courts, so that creates, they're a little bit slicker, so that could create some areas playing pickleball.
Okay.
Because you're short, lunging, moving.
Right.
In a shorter space than the tennis court. It'd be great if they bubbled the four pickleball courts and the hard courts would be for that, but that's not going to help us come next week.
And then if there was drop-ins, could they do a drop-in to, if the Rec Center is open gym, can, is there an allotment for like drop-ins for you guys? Like, can they just set up?
That doesn't work, because as soon as the kid shows up who has the basketball, it makes it kind of hard for them to play pickleball.
Yeah, you guys can't like occupy it once you kind of drop in.
What would you say your hours per week should be?
I would say, give us back Tuesday, Thursday. Give us those two hours each day, so they would have Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, whatever two hours they want to give us, we'll take. So that would then take it more in line with what our neighboring recreation centers are doing.
And like I said, if you give me a chance, let me find out whether that, whether Ryan has actually done something to program that time, if they haven't done something to program that time, it doesn't make sense to have an open gym.
And I know for the November-December in the book, there's nothing programmed for that.
And again, I don't know that, so I would have to check.
Do you know if the, is the intermediate unit using the gymnasium over there?
They're not.
They're not.
I have insight.
Yes, please.
Yeah, as long as you put your name and address, then.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Rush, also a resident. The reason I know about the intermediate unit is I'm involved with the youth wrestling, and they've been dying to use that room again, and it is not available. It's still being used for storage, and they have been.
I want to correct you on that.
Okay.
Because I talked to Dr. French about this, the area where youth wrestling was, is actually in the process of being restored, and as soon as that is done, youth wrestling will be back in that location.
Are you talking about the old middle school or the new middle school?
The old, the old middle school, right across that street.
Okay.
That's where they're moving back to.
I understood that to be, because I also talked to her the day I was at the intermediate unit, not to say you're wrong. I might.
Well, I could be, but that's why.
The auxiliary gym at the new middle school, old high school, is being redone. And I know Mr. Sikorski, Sikorski, Sikorski.
Sikorski.
Thank you. Was part of that email chain saying it's under construction right now, we don't know. And I talked to Brad Rao, I believe, and he said he had already ordered all of the materials for that room, and they were expecting them to be done in three weeks, and that they had told wrestling that they feel like they can be there in there as of January 1st.
So therefore, the IU is not utilizing those?
They are utilizing them for storage right now. Wrestling, I mean, not to get off topic of pickleball, I just know this from a wrestling standpoint, has offered manpower, you know, galore to help with that, and has been denied.
You're saying that's the old auxiliary?
The intermediate unit.
The downstairs?
Yes.
Okay. But the upstairs, I guess I'm wondering, I mean, that seems like that would be a good opportunity.
I don't know if you were thinking about it in terms of pickleball, I don't.
I have a call-in to them as well, from the basketball, because it's, the gym sits vacant, and it's the same thing they're saying is, you can't use it. Why can't you use it if no one's, and basketball's offered to pay, you have a unit there, everything, wrestling's offered.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if they're not using it during the school day either, I mean, that wouldn't compete with.
Yeah, but then they, did they lease the whole building to the intermediate unit, or did they just?
Well, if you remember, we met with them, I brought that up, and I said, and they said they told me they put a provision into the lease. I'm not saying they did it, but that's what they told me that night, to still be able to use it, because we were paying for Hill Press to use that. They were paying for facility when we went here, so.
I think pickleball is a big example, in general, of a lack of space for recreation sports in the township. And I think, you know, we've had multiple people look through that catalog and say, and go through item by item and make a schedule in front of them and say, this space is open. And I understand, Mr. Lewis, your point about we're the wrong place for this conversation, but if I understand correctly, Parks and Rec reports to you. Like, they are under your umbrella in a way, or not really?
They are an advisory board.
Okay. So what happens if the township goes to an advisory? You know, if we go to the board and we make our point and it's not well-received, is this not where we then bring that conversation?
I think you always have the, you always have the right to come to us if it's of concern.
Okay. I just want to make sure we came to the right place. Yeah.
So I think with the marching orders that I'm hearing going forward, Paul, you're going to take a look with Michelle and see if there is a time that we can get pickleball in there, and.
If not, look for some alternatives, maybe. I don't know, be creative, but I don't know where.
Okay.
It would be much appreciated, because like I said, the dynamics, and really the fun of it, we laugh for a couple hours, you know, and like I said, it brought us together. It brought people that normally, I wouldn't know. And it's just a shame that in my community, I don't have a say in my rec center with my tax dollars, why can't I play? I don't understand it.
And I think when Sue talked about, you know, the next big age group of, you know, younger kids, I think offering, I actually work for someone who has a son who's 14 years old, and he's dying to play pickleball, like, he really is. So I think offering some youth programs honestly would be the next step. I think it would be highly attended and very popular, especially for those kids who maybe aren't at the competitive level of some of our other really competitive sports in our township. So I think supporting the pickleball program could help all ages.
I think they do teach it at the school.
Yes, they do, at the middle school. And that's where her son learned, and he wanted to play more, so we were able to get him in touch with an instructor. And she ended up having a huge calling. It's a different instructor than Sue spoke with. She actually only focused on youth players, and she's been teaching over the summer at Mingo. So I don't know what her plans are for the winter. I assume she'll probably not have lessons.
As I said, there's a need now, that as it continues to grow, there's going to be even more need. I know the new park is having some pickleball courts that you can, don't do that. I don't know the old tennis courts at the, the old high school, like, couldn't be, that that's something for outdoor. Utilize that, but our big thing now is we have nowhere to go with this.
Okay, we understand.
I feel like you have the support of council, and please, you know, get back to us if you're not getting what it is you need.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're going to report to us at the next meeting, right? I mean, unless something can be done in the interim, just do it.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jeff Crumey. I am the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Board. I just wanted to clarify one thing with regard to what had been brought to our board. About four months ago, there were two pickleball players that came to our board, and they expressed two concerns. Concern number one was the fees. They thought the drop-in fees were excessive, and the other community's fees were lower. And he wanted to pay ahead for the whole program, the amount of fees were excessive in their opinion. The second thing they talked about was the time of day that was allocated for pickleball. I believe the Monday, Wednesday group is from noon to 2:00 or noon to 3:00, I don't have the exact time, and they wanted to know if they could have something in the morning. And we asked them to go back with their group, talk amongst them, and schedule meetings with the recreation director, to sit down and talk about what times they would be looking for, to see if there was something we could do, and we never heard back from anybody. And that's the last anyone ever came to the Parks and Recreation Board regarding this subject.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm not saying they don't have an issue or a valid complaint, I'm just saying that all of this did not come to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Thank you, Mr. Crumey.
My name is Nora Katugno, and I live on Springbrook Drive, and that was not our pickleball group. There are two consecutive, there are two different pickleball groups, Monday, Wednesday, and we're Tuesday, Thursday. And I would compare that for you, to think of that as JV and varsity, we're the JV team over there.
Oh, okay.
So we can't really all play together either, and, you know, it's a great sport, and we just need place to play. So we were not part of that meeting, and we came to you because our dealings with the Rec Center weren't fruitful, they weren't getting, they weren't hearing us, and he wasn't.
But the place you do go, if you're not happy with what you hear from a township staff, is in fact the Parks and Rec Board, because that's who provides direction to the township staff, that's who advises council. And so I would encourage you, if you have concerns about any park and rec facility or any park and rec program, that you first talk to Michelle Harmel, and if you're not satisfied with that answer, you go to the Parks and Rec.
So Mr. Lauer, with all due respect, we're here because that other meeting didn't go well for pickleball. It wasn't our group, but the other group. So we decided, and then we spoke to Rec ourselves, to Ryan and everybody at the Rec Center, and so now, you know, they have a bad taste about pickleball players.
I don't think that's true, because there's been an effort at the tennis center to get more pickleball instruction there.
Yeah, but now with the weather.
No, I understand, but to say that they have a bad taste about pickleball isn't true.
Well, okay, so we've met with them several times, and we just wanted really, we want council to be aware that it's a growing need in the community, and we won't be the only ones playing pickleball. So we were already a set group, and our time was taken away from last Tuesday, Thursday.
You know, we have a lot on the agenda still, so we, we instructed Mr. Lauer, he's going to, he's going to look into the schedule, and hopefully we'll be able to accommodate everybody.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda will be a request from the middle school to, for special permit to play temporary. special permit to place temporary signs along East McMurray Road.
And they're doing this in conjunction with a dance-a-thon, which is a fundraiser for a charity. And so it's my recommendation that council issue a special.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos. Is that, was all aye?
They're all ayes.
Aye.
Delayed, okay. I think it was seven, nothing. Next item will be authorization of appropriate township officials to execute an easement agreement with West Penn Power.
Yes. Where the progress is continuing on the fire station number three to bring power onto the site. West Penn Power requires an easement for the location of their service to the building. So it's my recommendation that the appropriate township official be authorized to execute an easement agreement with West Penn Power.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos. Carry seven, nothing. Next will be authorization of the township official to execute a stormwater maintenance agreement with Matina Realty.
Ryan, could you close the door?
So one of the things that PennDOT has done over the last few years, that anytime there is a private pipe that connects on to the PennDOT storm sewer system, there is a requirement that the municipality be the applicant for the highway occupancy permit. What in turn, PennDOT encourages municipalities to do, and we have adopted this as a practice, is to enter into an agreement with the private property owner, transferring responsibility for the maintenance of that pipe on to the private property owner. So that's what you have here tonight. Council has already authorized the manager to be the signer for all HOPs in Peters Township. So what this is, is to authorize the appropriate township official to execute a storm sewer maintenance agreement with Matina Realities.
Do you want to make a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Do they have to post any kind of a bond for future maintenance?
No.
And that's because we have the ability to lean the building?
Yes. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Mark, but the way the agreement is set up is they have a responsibility to maintain it. If they fail to maintain it and the township reserves the right to go in and correct the problem. And if we correct the problem, we have the right to build them and lean them.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on that?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos. Carry seven, nothing. This will be approval to close Turkeyfoot Road during daylight hours for Columbia Gas to make pipeline repairs.
So Columbia Gas has determined that the casing that surrounds their pipe that, that goes across Turkeyfoot Road is impacting the, the pipe itself. And so it's at this location right here.
Where, Paul?
Where?
It's at the intersection, almost at the intersection of Beebout and Turkeyfoot. So to be able to do this repair, they think they need to be, to be, to close down Turkeyfoot Road in its entirety for, for a period of time. What they'll be doing in the evening is putting down steel plates so that open the road back up. But they are going to post, to their credit, they're going to post a detour like you would see on a, on a PennDOT project, so that people get around. I'm not sure there really is an alternative to this, to be honest with you, so.
Can they do it at night and then put the plates up during the day when there's more traffic?
Right.
Yeah, but then you're going to have the people living there complaining about the jackhammer.
I don't know how far down it is. I mean, is it way down there?
Oh, it's, it's, it's near homes.
Yeah. You're going to have everybody in Timberlake complaining about the noise.
Did they put, put out any notification of residents?
I don't know when this work's actually going to begin. There's other permits needed besides ours. You can make that a condition, that they notify the adjacent property owners. To be quite honest with you, though, if they go ahead with this work, I think we're going to notify the adjacent property owners to make sure they get notice.
Are we, do we have any doubt that this needs to happen that way? That it's impossible to do that job without restricting both lanes?
I don't know how we can make that determination. I think only they can make that determination. What they're talking about doing, I think, is going to be kind of tricky because there's a casing around an existing gas line. And so what they're going to go, go in and do is to remove the casing and leave the gas line. So I don't know how they're going to go about doing that.
Is it going to cause any gas disruption to the neighborhoods or anything like that?
No.
And the presumption is that Beebout is not going to have to be shut down.
No.
It's only Turkeyfoot. And it's their pipe, right?
It's their pipe, yeah.
And they're going to repave the road and everything afterwards, right?
Yes.
Any care to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request by Columbia Gas to close Turkeyfoot Road for a period of 14 days during daylight hours for the purposes of undertaking repairs to the Columbia Gas Pipeline, subject to the condition that they notify all homeowners within 1,000 feet.
This, almost as I read that, almost gives me the thought that this is a transmission line rather than a distribution line?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that.
It's a lot of high pressure, a lot higher pressure.
That's why I added the condition for the 1,000 feet.
Also, feet's a big area from that.
I understand that, but you know what?
That's fine. We can do that.
We're letting them work during the day. I mean, we could be difficult and force them to do this at night and bring out their spotlights and all that.
I think they should notify what, where the detours are in writing, or we should.
Okay. So they're going to work these 14 continuous days, right?
Yes. Even weekends with that?
Do you want to add that to your motion, 14 continuous, just?
Well, that's what I understood it to be.
Nobody says?
So I just said 14 days.
Yeah, and I, I don't know whether they're working Saturdays and Sundays. I don't know that.
Do you want to put that on the?
Well, I don't, I, I don't know that there's.
Okay, so overtime.
All right, so I'll amend my motion for it to say 14 continuous days. And we want, you know, I'll add additional condition, and we want 10 days notice before the work starts.
Well, how, how far in advance do you want them to notify the residents?
Same thing, 10 days. Because if they're working on a high-power transmission line there, I mean, people that live close to it should be aware of that.
So what do you mean? Can you explain to me what that means? Is it having to do with the sound or the?
Just a lot more gas and a lot?
Possibility of issues happening, like?
Yeah. Just because, you know, I mean, I necessarily want your kids playing outside. There's a chance they're going to hit the transmission line and have a sonic boom or something like that, you know?
Yeah. I'll second Frank's simple motion.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So while we're talking about closing roads, there's actually a representative here who's going to be working on this project. As I explained to you before, Verizon wants to go in and on Druid Drive on that high, high tension electric tower, place another set of antennas for, for their use. To be able to do that, they need to take a, a substantial crane on to Druid Drive. And what they would like to do is on, to close Druid Drive and, and it would stay closed to all traffic, two days.
Two days, November 14th and 15th.
You need to come up here.
When you say to all traffic, does, does that mean, I mean, that's just, that's not for people that live on the street?
It's, it's all traffic and, and their intention is to set up in such a way that they're not blocking any driveway. In the case of Druid, you can get there from either direction. It's just that.
It's no through traffic.
Yeah.
They just want to block Druid in front of the, of the tower.
My name is Scott Murdock, representing JV Dado Electric. We're actually doing the construction for Verizon. But what we want to do is we want to put the crane right in front of the tower. And if I walk to the screen and, see, this here is, right here is First Energy. This is where the tower, this is First Energy's right-of-way. There's no housing here. We want to set the crane right in front of this tower here, block the street off at each end and then we'll have a sign. Fireside Drive would be the, the detour around. And put a sign, I think if you're coming from that way, Fireside Drive, put a sign, road closed, access to driveway. I think this is 118, 121. And then they say, we'll have flags our door today. Do the same down here, have the road closed, access to house 120, whatever this one is. But we sit right here in front of the tower, these driveways will all be accessed from that side. And then this house here, this house will be accessed from the other side. And if there's any deliveries or mail service or whatever, we can deliver packages ourselves if it's, you know, we just want to, there's no place else to sit because there's a bank goes right up to the tower and it's everybody's yard, so.
How many days is this that you guys are looking at?
Two days, November 14th and 15th.
And you'll let the police department, fire department, EMS know about it?
Yes.
And I've already, I met this morning and, and let them know that they don't have a problem with it from the standpoint that they can, they can get to any of those locations based upon the fact it's a blue. So.
Is this?
The crane will be actually sitting right underneath the lines in First Energy's right-of-way. And so as long as everybody does, I think the guy from the crane company was going to, once we get this okayed, he was going to do it for everybody as well.
How heavy is the crane to have?
I think they're going to try to do it with a 70-ton crane. And he's not here and I don't really know what the weight is. But we have to have, the weight of the ton, or the, the weight of the crane, the tonnage, doesn't mean the crane weighs 70 tons.
Right, I understand that.
But it's, that's what we need to get enough height to get up over top to set, to do our work and set the pole. It'll be a 70-ton crane. I can get you all the weights and.
You don't have any issues with them bringing the crane off the road?
I don't know how they do this work or they don't.
Well, no. The street doesn't have a weight restriction on it, does it?
No, I think the crane is like 60,000 pounds from what I understand. It's like, it's less than one of the tri-axles.
All right, okay.
I mean, they travel the highway, so it's not, I mean, 70 ton doesn't mean it's 140,000 pounds.
No, I understand that, yeah.
They're around 50 to 60, depending on, you know, the figure you have, crane and the weight. They travel down the turnpike and every other road.
Yeah, it's going to be one with multiple axles, right?
Yeah, just the only thing is there's no place to put the operators. We can't slide one way or the other to leave a lane open because it's basically, that's the only spot to sit.
Do you anticipate any damage to the property, the yard?
If we do, maybe. I mean, well, the property that we're building the site on, we have to put the power conduits and the fire conduits, that will be reseeded. But everything will be retopso, reseeded, strewn, everything will be leased.
The question I'd have is related more to the power line, while you have the crane under it, is de-energized? Is that the?
We do our, I'm actually adjourned in line with our local 126. We do our own testing and grounding. We'll do all that ourselves. We'll have it up for a week, Monday through Friday, and then we'll.
And that does not disrupt service within the neighborhood?
It will. And honestly, there's no guarantee. The night before, they can say, yeah, you know, outages is never really a guarantee. But that's the days we're scheduled now. But the line will be off for five days. But they'll, they'll reroute that through other lines who carry the, you know, they'll split that loop up amongst the rest.
But you're not trying to sleeve the cables up on the.
No, what we're doing is we're, Verizon, 18 teams are already on the one side of the tower. Verizon's going to set their own pole and go up the outside of the tower and put their antennas on their own, it's called a four-word pole. We're just taking the line outage off for safety. We're not actually doing any, any inline work.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we.
Our lawyer is going to make the motion?
Well, I don't have to. I don't know if there's just written here. But I, I make a motion that we approve the, what's being requested and for two, you know, two days, provide notice. Same thing.
When does this start?
November 14th and 15th. I mean, if there is an extra day because of weather or rain and we can't get in there, can't climb.
I'm not going to limit to, to that.
Yeah, I don't think we're predicting that. But if everybody goes, we get the outage from First Energy on Monday morning, Monday, Tuesday, we'll be done. Rest of it, we'll get the crane out of the rest. We can do all the power stuff, that's why we're just.
So you don't have to worry. The sun always shines at Peters.
Yeah.
I'll second.
So I just, you know, basically want to know the rate, the rate process, that's all we submit.
All right, a motion in a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos. Carry seven, nothing.
And that may do more benefit for Verizon customers than anything we've talked about so far.
Absolutely.
I'm certainly excited about it.
Yeah. I'll be curious what, what impact that has on, on the problem at the high school. Because I would think at that location, I think it would improve services, so.
All right. A resolution supporting Peters Creek Sanitary Authority's LSA application for replacement services along McCombs Road.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos. Carry seven, nothing. Next item will be a word of a contract for the purchase and installation of phones for this township office, or township-wide.
So the Peters Township 2022 budget includes an appropriation of $100,000 for the purchase of equipment and services for the acquisition of a phone system to replace the current aging system. The, what's being proposed is a, a voiceover internet protocol so that in fact, phones can be deployed and moved easily within this facility. And if we ever run back into the situation where people have to work from home, these can easily be moved to that location and operate as though they were here. On September 2nd, we received proposals and, and there were proposals submitted by five, six companies. The low bid was from Barry Solutions Group. It's a small communications company out of Altoona, which has only begun representing the product that they are proposing. In addition to that, when the engineer did the review of their bids, the bid does not, the bid as submitted does not comply with what was requested. There were 32 phone lines as opposed to the 55 that were requested in the bid. The phone system doesn't have the ability for the nomadic enhanced 911. So if the phone moves from a location and is used somewhere else, 911's going to believe that the call came in from here as opposed to the location of the phone. And everyone was to submit an audited financial statement. And, and one of the reasons why in this, with this particular company, that would be a concern, they've only been in business for a few years. So we had discussions with Advent Communication. They were the second lowest bidder. Advent is a large supplier of phone systems throughout southwestern Pennsylvania. As part of that discussion, they've agreed to actually lower their price by $6,070.20. And it's, it's going to be my recommendation that council award a contract for the purchase and installation of a phone system to Advent Communication. I, I copied down wrong in the miniature report, the note, the number.
What's the amount?
It's $93,725.80.
I'll make a motion that we award the bid to Advent Communications at the price, Mr. Lauer. Not to exceed price, Mr. Lauer, as we alluded to.
Yes.
Second.
Is there a timeframe for the implementation?
Well, our problem right now is that there is a upgrade to the wireless system that, that involves replacing all the switches on our computer system. Those are not available and will not be available until February of next year. So this is going to follow that, so.
I'm glad I asked.
Okay.
Is that five-year contract, that includes support for five years? That's included?
Yeah. And one of the things that they're willing to do, and we're going to take them up on it, is rather than to pay this as a lump sum, we can pay this as five annual payments.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos. Carry seven, nothing. Final item of new business will be the pre-qualification of bidders for the Aquatic Center.
Council authorized us in, in September to go out and attempt to prequalify bidders for the Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Center. The contractors that are shown on the screen have all met the minimum qualifications that were included in our pre-qualification statement. And it's going to be my recommendation that each of these firms be authorized to submit bids for the Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Center.
Well, I know Mr. Arkery isn't going to make this motion. So I will make a motion that council designate each of these firms as qualified to submit bids for the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven, nothing, Frank, payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order. I move they be approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carry seven, nothing. Anything you wanna discuss or correspondents?
I, I, I kinda correspondence now.
Okay, reports? Anybody have anything they would like to discuss?
What about the letter from the Freedom Transit? We get, did we give them money last year?
We gave them money this year. They're asking for additional funds.
How much did we give them?
$2,000.
So are we, are we gonna do that again?
As of right now, it's in the budget for next year. The question, what they're requesting is an additional payment from, from municipalities they serve.
Well, it says, it says that it's a 12% increase. So should we, let's give them two, whatever 12% more is. Can we do that?
Now or in the upcoming year, either way?
Whatever they're asking for, I guess it's next year. Is that what they're asking for?
Oh, no, I think they're asking for another significant contribution now.
Oh, I don't know. It says as you develop your 2023 budget.
I don't know, the way I read it is they're looking for something additional this year.
Right. And they want you to increase the contribution next year.
How many of those buses are they still running? I mean.
Oh, they're in town. I can't tell you that there's a lot of people on them, but I, I see them passing them down all the time.
All right, uh, so reports miscellaneous.
Did we come to a conclusion?
I have not heard a conclusion, but.
Are you, are you talking about this pledge?
The question is, do you wanna give additional money?
Well, 'cause it says it will not be needed until June of 2023.
Right.
Okay.
So I mean, we're giving them, you're saying to me, we're, you already have 2,000 in there for next year. Why don't we just add 12% to it?
We can do that.
And then it'll be that much. Huh?
Yeah, that's fine.
I think we're good with that.
That way we're giving them 12, basically 12% that went up.
Miscellaneous, your next agenda?
Have we, I guess I'm puzzled with the Center Church Road properties. I see one vehicle has moved to the other property, but they're still living in the first initial property. Is it Pierce?
And we have, we have located them, an attorney who's willing to help them at no cost. They have not chosen to take advantage of that. So I've instructed, um, Ed to have the code enforcement officer issue citations for the junk vehicle and the garage as a way to, perhaps to, to get this process moving along, so.
How do you know it doesn't run?
Oh, trust me, it doesn't run.
That man does not run. There's trees growing up through it.
So, yeah.
It's one of those Woody's, right?
No, not quite.
Nah.
I had one at about that same vintage, I guess, so that's maybe 20 years old.
All right, does anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss?
The only thing I would probably like to, to just reflect on is, I think I offended a couple of the groups that were here talking about pickleball with regard to saying, you know, you're coming to us, cold turkey, and we're not really the forum. But that's a message, I think, that needs to be understood, that I wasn't confronting them as much as, you know, we're really not sitting here with a position to, to take action one way or the other.
And I'm, I'm not sure, Mr. Lewis, they accepted it that way. I think they accepted it as you thought, that there's a board you should go to, not that you can't bring your concerns here, but.
See, I was confused too. I thought that they were the Monday, Wednesday and the Tuesday, Thursday.
I did, I'll be honest with you, I didn't know that we had two different groups that were in different days.
I thought they had already defended it.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah, I mean, makes, you can't control and help their schedule other than directing public that same.
Yeah, it would've been good if Mr. Crumby would've pointed that out earlier in the conversation, but.
I saw him in the back and I thought I could prompt him to, but anyway.
We've had several, um, long pickleball discussions here, so luckily for this council, this wasn't the first time. We just, I can't believe the leader of Peters Township wasn't here for that conversation. He must be on the varsity team, I'm guessing.
We, we do have an executive session.
Well, I thought Doll, Mr. Doll was gonna build a facility.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, he proposed it.
My understanding, he is building a facility.
But I thought, that's what I, he was gonna build one on the other side of, whatever's that, Baby Road?
Boys' Road. Boys' Road, he was gonna build.
Can you build one?
That deal fell through.
Well, he talked about doing that too. He talked about doing it at Rolling Hills.
Yeah, he proposed it at Rolling Hills, if you remember.
My understanding is he's now building a facility in Florida.
My dad's gonna help us.
Meeting's adjourned.